We all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I want to call to order the regularly public scheduled meeting of the Lower Gwinnett Township Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, October tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The Board of Supervisors did meet an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss matters of personnel and litigation. Before we get on to our agenda, I'm going to turn it over to our Vice Chair, Michael Torsky, who has a statement he wants to read on behalf of the board.
It is with a heavy, is with heavy hearts that we mourn the recent tragic events that have unfolded in Israel. Our thoughts and prayers go out to the people of Israel, especially to the victims and their families affected by the recent terrorist attack. We stand in unwavering solidarity with our friends and allies during this challenging time. As your board, we want to assure you that our township stands firmly alongside Israel, condemning all acts of violence and terrorism that seek to disrupt the lives of innocent civilians. We must continue to work together to promote peace, dialogue, and understanding in our community and around the world. Lower Gwinnett Township has a rich tapestry of diversity, and in times like these, it's crucial that we come together as a community to support one another, strengthen our bonds of friendship, and demonstrate our unwavering commitment to the values of freedom and democracy. Let us stand together as a beacon of hope and resilience in the face of adversity. And as we move forward, we reiterate our support for Israel and our shared commitment to a world where terrorism has no place, where all nations can live in peace, and where the hopes and aspirations of every individual are respected and protected. We're going to put this statement on the website, leave it up for a bit, and we're going to try to arrange for some humanitarian donations, coordinate with some other organizations in the area. Please spread the word, and if anyone has any ideas, thoughts, we welcome them. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Torsky. Next up, we have a proclamation to recognize the Whittington Valley Public Library in their hundredth year anniversary. The proclamation reads, "The Whittington Valley Public Library was established in nineteen twenty-three by the Colony Club of Ambler, serving Ambler, Lower Gwinnett, Upper Dublin, White Marsh, and Whitpain. Whereas the Whittington Valley Public Library opened a new public library on September eleventh, nineteen sixty-one, on Race Street. And whereas the Whittington Valley Public Library received its official name in nineteen sixty-nine with the merger of Ambler Public Library and Whitpain Library. And whereas the Whittington Valley Public Library has two missions, has a mission to welcome, connect, and inspire our community. And whereas the Whittington Valley Public Library will be celebrating a hundred years of service to Ambler, Whitpain, and Lower Gwinnett municipalities on October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Lower Gwinnett hereby recognize and honor the Whittington Valley Public Library for their continued vision to make everyone always feel welcome in our community." I want to congratulate the Whittington Valley Public Library. Is Anne Frank here? If you could come up and present your citation.
Thank you all for your support of the library. We're excited. On October first, we're going to be the branch of the library, we're going to be the amber bridge, and now we're going to be the.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight as well. Next up, comments on the, comments for citizens on items that are not on the agenda. Are there any public comments? You just come up and if you could use the, use the microphone, state your name and address.
Sure. Good evening to the board, Danielle. It's been a long time.
Good to see you as well, Keith.
Thank you. Keith Siegel, eleven thirty-nine Walnut Farm Road, resident of Lower Gwinnett now since two thousand and two. So I can't believe it's twenty-one years. First off, I appreciate the leadership you all have demonstrated, and it's wonderful to see you, Cap, as well. I'm up here because, first of all, Michael, thank you for your wonderful words that the board put together in support of the State of Israel and the Jewish people. It is a horrific time. It is devastating for American Jews, for those who support Israel, and frankly, those who support humanity. And so my ask and my request of the board, first of all, thank you for the statement, which I appreciate will go up, is to raise the Israeli flag as a short, excuse me, as a show of solidarity for the State of Israel. And I think back to two thousand and twenty-two and more recently, twenty-three, where we did similarly for the LGBT community by raising a flag in support of our brothers and sisters in our community who are lesbian, bisexual, gay, transgender. So my ask is that we do the same for our community in support of the State of Israel, and we raise the Israeli flag to show, as I said, solidarity. So that is my request and ask of the board, and I hope you'll join me in doing so for a duration commiserate with what we've done with LGBTQ. I welcome any questions. And with respect, Michael, with respect to your ask, Rob, my wife, Robin, is sitting here. Her cousin runs a humanitarian logistics firm, so they go into Ukraine, Syria, Lebanon, and now Israel, and having to deliver humanitarian medical and a protective gear supply. So if you'd like, I will drop you an email. We could talk about how we might be able to get over, get supplies over to Israel and do so very quickly.
Please do. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much to all of you. And like I said, I appreciate the time.
Keith, I do have a couple of questions.
Yes.
You wanted us to raise the flag. What was the duration that you're looking for, and when did you want it to commence?
My, thank you, Danielle, for asking. My thought is immediately. And I think a duration of a month would be commiserate of what we've done in the past.
And just logistically and functionally?
And I'm happy to buy the flag if you.
No, I appreciate that. I think the original request, and we were just made aware of this this evening, included it being flown underneath the American flag. I think we're not legally.
Not fly it up or has to be below.
I don't know, and this is, we're looking into the clarification. I think we need it to be on our Lower Gwinnett Township flagpole. Like, similarly, we had the pride flag underneath the township. That's acceptable.
Absolutely.
Okay. I just wanted to get those two points of clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you. Was there, are there any other questions from the board?
We need to take a vote or discuss?
So that's what I was going to ask for our solicitor next.
Yeah, you would have to take a vote to amend the agenda.
To add and then take.
And then take a separate vote on.
Would we need to take a vote? I mean, isn't it just government speech?
Government speech, but I think it will be appropriate for you to recognize it as such.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you, man. He still Jaylen is it all up?
I will. I will, as long as you tell Aaron. We saw him at the bus game. Are there any additional comments from the public? On items not on the agenda? Is there anyone who might?
So.
You want to make the motion?
To amend the agenda. To.
Consideration of raising the Israeli flag.
Yes, to show our solidarity with the Jewish people in Lower Gwinnett Township here and abroad for a duration of thirty days.
Well, your motion is just to amend the agenda.
Just to amend the agenda. Oh, excuse me. Okay, well, then I'll repeat myself.
Okay, go ahead.
I make a motion to amend the agenda to consider raising the Israeli flag for a duration of thirty days.
A second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion carries. So we have before us a motion to consider raising the Israeli flag on the Lower Gwinnett flagpole to show our solidarity with residents in Lower Gwinnett of Israeli or heritage as well as and the people of Israel. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the public? Saying none, I'd like to make a motion to raise the flag of Israel below the Lower Gwinnett Township flag on our flagpole for a duration of one month commencing.
Soon as we get a flag.
Soon as we get a flag. As soon as we obtain a flag for it to commence. Is there a second?
For thirty days.
For thirty days, for a month, thirty days.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Michelle.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah. I don't even know. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you.
There's it doesn't last that long, even thirty days.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Next up, we have building and zoning. We have consideration of a decision in order for conditional use application for stormwater management facilities in the wetlands or the buffer area at seven twenty-seven Narstown Road. I think we have representation. You could just state your name?
Yes, good evening. Well, we represent the applicants. And we completed the conditional use hearing last time. We are awaiting hopefully a positive decision on that. And with respect to the next item in the agenda, preliminary final land development approval, we have a draft resolution that Mr. Stein prepared. My client has reviewed it and agreed to be bound by the terms of this resolution and has signed it. So I'm prepared if the board votes for this and assign copy up to Mr. Stein.
Are there any questions?
Already got it today, so. Oh, okay, great.
Could I ask you to use the microphone, folks online?
Oh, can they not hear?
Here unless, okay, that's better. Thank you.
Is it on? Is it on? Try it, try it out.
Okay, do you want me to repeat what I just said?
Say hello.
Okay, okay. Just again, Carl, we're representing the applicants.
I don't know if it's on.
It's on.
It's just my hearing.
Be that too.
Are there any questions from the board? Any question from the public or anyone online? Okay, so we have a memorandum that was included in our board packet. We have, I'll make a motion for us to prove the conditional use application for stormwater management facilities in the wetland or buffer area of seven twenty-seven Narstown Road to Spring House Innovation Park per the resolution that is included in our board packet by our solicitors. There a second? Second, all those in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. And on a personal note, let me thank you also for your support of the State of Israel.
Thank you.
Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Are they, is that going to be approval for both?
No, it's just the one. Yes, the conditional use? Yep. Okay. So next up, we have resolution two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-two for a land development plan through the electrical substation and parking for building fourteen of the Spring House Innovation Park at seven twenty-seven Narstown Road. That resolution is included in our board packet. Are there any questions from the board? Saying none, are there any questions from the public? Saying none, I'll make a motion to approve the land development plan for the electrical substation and parking for the building fourteen of the Spring House Innovation Park at seven twenty-seven Narstown Road. Is there a second? Second, all those in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you again.
Don't make electricity.
Next up, we have a consideration for the authorization, no, it's the authorization to initiate the ordinance amendment process, including authorization to advertise the legal notice for an amendment to driveway regulations in the subdivision and land development ordinance in chapter ten forty-four driveways in the township code. We actually have a memorandum in our board packet that outlines this situation that was discussed and recommended by our Building and Zoning Subcommittee and Township staff regarding the preparation of a proposed driveway ordinance. It outlines the criteria as it stands right now in the SALDO section of our township code and how it is only listed in the town SALDO section of our township code, but nowhere else within the chapter. The requirements of driveways only apply to property seeking land development or subdivision approval. This proposed ordinance would create a new section of the township code that establishes permitting requirements, construction standard, roadway drainage requirements, and other regulations pertaining to driveways. This proposed ordinance was attached. So this is for the entirety of this process, which include authorization to advertise the legal notice and the amendment of the driveway regulations. Are there any questions from the board? And I don't know, Neil, do you want to share anything additional?
I was just describing there. The technical aspects were provided by the township engineer and traffic consultant.
Jim, do you want to give any explanation? No? Okay.
I have some.
I do just have a question. Oh, sorry. I do just have one question. Does with this, with this new ordinance, will we now be consistent with land development and this ordinance so that the regulations are all the same?
Yeah, the regulations are all the same, and they're contained in SALDO and then also in a standalone ordinance that would be applicable to people who are just not in the subdivision and land development process.
Okay. I just have a question. Theoretically, would it restrict individuals from doing things that they have been doing for years because they weren't doing land development? Meaning outside of the idea of impervious surface and those requirements, is it going to restrict somebody from doing something that they would have done with their driveway?
If a driveway exists today, it would be an existing nonconformity with the ordinance. So this wouldn't be forcing anyone to bring their current driveway up to standards. It would just be for new proposed driveways or alterations to existing.
So repaving your driveway?
That's, that's, that's my question.
Yeah, the repaving. Is repaving going to be?
Because that, that, I mean, as I read it, okay, I, well, I guess the first question is, is the intent that it would cover repaving?
That was not my understanding of the intent.
So if I have a nonconforming driveway currently, and I know that I need to repave it, I don't then have to comply with this ordinance? That was my main question, too.
Well, I think that's, so there's, there's, there's things you can do to your driveway, right? You can get it resealed.
Sealed.
Well, that worked for a little, little while, but what we had to do is we had to go down a few inches and they put new tar or something on there. I get the technical ass, yeah, whatever it is.
McCadam.
And so as I read for ten forty-four point oh three, right? And I'm sorry to be.
Yeah, Lloyd.
Should get up here with you. Come on, Chad.
So no, no person, owner and or contractor, so hereafter install, initiate any work or allow the installation or initiation of any work toward the installation of a driveway. So I'm, I'm not, I don't, I don't think we would ever interpret it this way, but what does installation of a driveway mean? Like installation of a new driveway?
To me, installation of a driveway is providing an access that doesn't exist already.
Renovating, rehabilitating, repairing.
Well, installation of a new driveway, I mean.
So even if you're expanding, so I guess my question is, I know I have to do, I live across the street from a creek, and I have to do this frequently. If every time I had to get a repaving done, I had to comply with this ordinance, I, it would be difficult, even if I'm expanding it or changing the type of material.
Are you getting a permit from the township?
Am I?
Or do people who repave their driveways need a permit from the township?
No.
No. So if you're not getting a permit from the township, then I don't think you're.
It's not re.
But nobody's getting a perm shit, permit from the township now to put in a driveway, right?
You have road, road opening permits. There's just no design standards.
Okay.
These create design standards.
And ten forty-four point oh five. How? So what is more than one driveway? I, I know, I'm hoping I understand what it means, but like horseshoe driveway, is it one, is it more than one ingress egress?
It's more than one ingress and egress.
So my neighbors have a horseshoe driveway.
Governor's driveway, where there's like, it's just a loop in from their house. Yeah, that would be prohibited under this ordinance.
Oh.
Why? Why? Oops, that's going to be a lot of homes.
Everyone's none, everyone's grandfathered in.
Everyone that has right now is fine, but there were.
One in the future. We can't have one.
What, so if somebody has a horseshoe.
So there were.
Go back and.
There were some applications that came in that had two driveways. And there, what I heard from the Building and Zoning Committee was that they didn't want that to be allowed, so.
Difference, there's a difference between two driveways. So I think there's a difference between.
Shoe is different.
Two driveways, two, two, more than one egress coming on on two different streets. So if you have a corner lot, right? So I think we were talking about the one off.
Or even just having.
Road that was.
But even having two different distinct driveways is different to me than a horseshoe.
I, I understand, but how do you define it?
Oh, go ahead, Fred. Yeah, because, but if you, yeah.
But one driveway isn't defined.
It is.
It's, it's, listen, we, I understand. You're saying that if you have more than one ingress and egress, that's more than one driveway. But I wouldn't necessarily, certainly there's a difference of opinion because I don't think anyone here thought it was more than one driveway.
It's all connected. It's one.
Okay, well, I, I think that my, my thought was, and you know, Chad can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the least amount of points of access to roads is, is the safest. So if we've got five houses in a row and everyone has a horseshoe, now it's like you have ten driveway connections or places where people could be coming in and out of.
You can still have a big driveway.
Yeah, I agree with Jim. I think that was the intent was to, you know, reduce or minimize the number of driveway openings. I think, you know, in the traffic engineering world, the horseshoe driveway would be considered two driveways. If you want us to take a further look at how a driveway is defined, I think we would need to look at that more closely to make sure that if the board wants to permit the quote unquote horseshoe driveways, that somehow that isn't construed for other uses to their advantage. For example, if you have a commercial use that has two driveway openings that are connected by an internal drive, are they going to consider that one driveway?
Every Wawa has.
So we would just have to be careful.
Between residential and commercial.
Yeah, we, we would have to make sure we defined it clearly.
What is our residential land, I mean, for the SALDO, do we, do we say the same language, it's prohibited. So if there's new construction, new development, they're not.
Yeah. How long has that been the case?
There's a significant amount.
More than twenty years? Because there's horseshoe driveways in my neighborhood, and it's just about twenty years old.
Well, the problem is, is that they didn't go in when development came in. They, they went in after. And now you're out of subdivision land development.
Right, so when the development came in, it was a fix after the fact, and it didn't go to, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Oh, I see. That's clever.
Yeah, most of those, I would assume, were done through building permits and.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's exactly how it was done.
So we need to make a decision as a board whether that's something we want to prohibit or permit. And because we should be consistent and shouldn't be that.
I mean.
You, it shouldn't be that you, you know, prohibit it during land development, but then once the homeowner moves in, they can do it themselves, and we're okay with it, right? I feel like we should be consistent if it's.
I, I think there are some really big lots in this township.
That's what I was going to say.
And to say you can't have a horseshoe driveway on some of these lots seems inconsistent with what the people in the township would want.
Yeah.
So I'm not so sure. It's just about defining what a driveway is. I think it's, is this even something that residents want or would be upset if they found out of?
Do we need, would you agree that we should make it consistent within land development as well?
Not necessarily.
Because after that, you do whatever you want with your property.
And maybe there's a minimum, look, if we're going to limit it, maybe there's a minimum lot size. I mean, would you do it on a half acre lot? Probably not. Could you do it on a three acre lot? Yeah. I think we're trying to put a one size fits all remedy to something that doesn't warrant a one size fits all remedy?
I mean, I just personally would think that if I had enough land to do a horseshoe, I would want to. And I would, I wouldn't despair if anybody.
I think most people would feel that.
Yeah.
Okay, well, let us take a look at rewriting those sections, and we'll bring it back to you.
Awesome.
I have a question on the, on the composition of the driveways. So you, you list asphalt and gravel and concrete as the approved surfaces. What if they're, you know, what if somebody wants to use a, or a pervious material that's not on your list? What, I mean, there may be new ways to make driveways that are, that are more eco-friendly. Is that possible?
Yeah, it's certainly possible. I think that a lot of the pervy, like pervious asphalt would be considered asphalt, pervious pavers to me would be considered an equivalent to some of the other materials that are in this ordinance.
Okay, if you just expanded the wording to say including any commonly accepted material, I don't know the wording, professionally accepted material.
Okay, yeah, we can take a look at that also.
Yeah, but, but to the point of the two driveways, there, so there is at least one house in my neighborhood that has two driveways. And they just built the house, so I'm assuming it was approved through the normal processes.
Yes.
And that wasn't.
That has two driveways?
Yeah, it's, it's sort of a horseshoe shape, but one, one comes out on one street and one comes out on another street.
Yeah, so I mean, the ordinance isn't in place yet. So that, that's something that we have been approving. I misunderstood what the intent of this was. No, it's, it's all good. So we're going to take a look at defining that, and we'll talk further with the Building and Zoning Committee and figure out if in fact, those horseshoe driveways should be permitted, and if they, that's the wish of the board, then that's what the ordinance will say.
I agree. I think from the B and Z perspective, I, I apologize. I just wasn't, I didn't envision this until I read it. The horseshoe driveway thing. I just, I didn't think it all together. I think you have to be careful because there's opportunity for shenanigans with a horseshoe driveway. I mean, could you have two access points and just connect it with a strip of asphalt and say, that's a horseshoe driveway irrespective of the size of the lot? That's where you could get into trouble, I think.
And the road you're coming out on?
Well, I think if it's more than one, you know, if you're having an ingress or egress on two separate roads, that's different. I think commercial property is different.
Is there a way, I guess, Neil, that you think that it could be crafted in such a way to ensure the intent of a horseshoe driveway on someone's one, you know, individual property and not utilize multiple streets or?
I'm sure Jim and Chad could figure out a way. So I. Well, I just think if you, I'm, yeah, exactly. I mean, if there's an angle, you know, and you're, you're just not going to see that in a commercial property necessarily. But.
I apologize as well. I didn't envision this until I read it, and then I had a whole bunch of questions after I read it, so.
It's all good. That's why we ask for authorization to advertise. The process is working.
Trust the process.
Are there any additional questions from the board? Any questions from the public? I'd like to make a motion to table the authorization to initiate the ordinance amendment process. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries. Table. Thank you. Next up, we have the two thousand and twenty-four budget, the review of the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty capital project plan. Turn that over to Jane.
Yeah, everybody has, at their seat, the proposed twenty, well, it's really kind of the multi-year capital project plan. And in your packet, we had circulated a memo, kind of draw, pointing out certain items listed in this list that we kind of wanted feedback on in order to properly plan for the two thousand and twenty-four budget. So we get to the. So everybody has seen this, everybody has seen this list before. Most of the projects on it are ones that have been multi-year, so I'm not going to go through each item unless someone has a question in particular. But basically, the way the memo laid out, what we wanted feedback for, what we wanted to point out, one of the, the first thing is the Public Works, the Future Public Works Building. You'll recall at your last meeting, you authorized, you approved the award for the feasibility study proposal for eighteen thousand dollars. And then the idea is that that will, you know, they'll, they'll get that study complete, and then they'll move into some design work. So we had allocated about a hundred thousand with the caveat that should property become available or the opportunity to purchase land for the Future Public Works Building, staff may be before the board for a budget amendment if that were to become available. The next thing is the park and rec, the parks plans. Obviously, we had the presentation of the draft plans. And we, we are, that's going to go before the park and rec board later this, this month, and those plans identified a whole host of projects. So the first step is to start narrowing down or phasing or prioritizing the list of projects and that are coming out of each of these plans. So that's something that we'll need feedback on to figure out. That are coming out of each of those plans. So that's something that we'll need feedback on to figure out. Um, what you want to see in the two thousand twenty-four budget. Um, a lot, a large portion of those projects though will be projects that we seek grant funding for. So that's the other thing to get a list, so we, we know which, which applications we should submit. Because they'll come up pretty quickly in the, in the new year. So there might be a small amount shown in the budget. But that's with the anticipation that grant funding will be, will be sought and then.
That's our small amount, our share, basically.
Yeah, and then, and just preparing the grant applications. Um, and with that though, when we, when we seek grant funding. You're all familiar with how long, you know, how you're waiting and waiting to find out if you're getting funding. So. Um, more of the cost is pushed out then into future years because that's when the actual project work will be completed.
Jamie, do, um, do the costs include somebody preparing the grant? Or is that expected to be done in-house?
Um, the grant will be, the grant applications will be done in-house along with the assistance of the engineers. So. Um, there will be engineering and, um, you know, planning cost associated with that. But we're not bringing in, um, like an outside grant writer unless the board decides that that's necessary.
Right.
Um, so just a few other new items that are on this list that you might not have seen prior. Um, the first one is, um, Ingersoll Park improvements. And what we included in the two thousand twenty-four plan is the possibility of replacing the ball field fencing. Um, I know we had talked about this. I think this might have came up when we had the, um, presentation. But there is, um, an opportunity to either fund this through. Um, either grants or ARPA funding or whatnot, but that seemed to be a priority to kind of do in advance of. Um, any type of phasing of the improvements that were identified in the master plan. So if the board is. You know, interested in pursuing that, then we'll, we'll put that in the two thousand twenty-four budget, um, and then.
So that, so that fencing amount can be done before it will be disruptive to the larger park being completed. So if we do the fencing first, it will be fine. It's not like you mess up anything and have to redo it again.
Uh, I don't think, I don't, I think we think that it would be okay. Yep.
Okay.
Adam, Adam's here from the Little League too. If anybody wants to hear about, um, sort of why. Why the fencing would be such a priority. It's really a safety concern at this point. Um, I don't know if the board has any questions, but I did ask Adam to come field them because he's more, more familiar with them than I am.
Well, I guess my question is, is, is it possible? October, is it possible to have this completed? Like if we prioritized it before the spring opening day? Is it possi- I don't know. Oh, if you, if you could come up, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Adam, you need the mic.
Just say, if you just state your name. You have to pick it up. They can't.
Adam Taylor, we're going to Little League. Um, before I get into that, I do want to echo Keith's statement. Um, and then other gentleman who spoke about what you guys are doing for Israel. Um, I think that's great. It's a, it's another disaster, so I, I appreciate your support. I have a sister who lives there. My niece is serving. It's, you know, the pictures you get, the videos you get, it's, it's awful. So I appreciate everything you guys are doing. Um, as far as the fence goes. It, it, it is important. It seems, I don't know when they were initially installed. I would, I would think they're pretty dated at this. What's that? You know, on a daily basis, those balls are flying out of the park. I picture as cars get hit and I know no matter what you do, it's not going to prevent it from not happening. But anything you can do to reduce that risk is huge. Um, you know, it's just going to take one ball to hit a car. This past season, the guy hit it right through his sunroof. God forbid him hit in the head and he drives off and it's a telephone pole. I mean, we're at the end of a ton of issues, all of us. Um, and the way it's structured right now, the balls can fly out, they can hit kids. They do hit kids and I think there's a way to just prevent that. So as far as your question about timing goes, we did ask the contractors and they basically told us that if you can get it. Sort of an answer by the end of the year, ideally sooner than that, it is something that they could get done before, uh, opening day, which would be, you know, April first or so. Of next year.
The grounds, assuming the ground is not frozen.
Yeah, I asked them that same question and he said they basically work three hundred sixty-five. I mean, maybe once, once in the past ten years, he said they had to stop for like a week.
Does, does, does putting in the fences, putting in new fencing now for the sea, for the upcoming season? Where we're going to do any of the other improvement? Is there the possibility? That we're going to either have to move the fencing and where we want to put some of the other amenities? Or be limited in where we're going to be able to put those amenities? And sorry, two-part around.
Yeah.
And.
That's a gym. That's what I just.
Yeah, yeah. I, I, no, no, I, I wasn't a hundred percent sure. You asked, can we, I'm asking, is it going to limit what we can do?
Yeah.
I don't think so. I mean, I know when we looked at the plan, nothing that was going to be done. Was really going to affect the fencing. It's, it's almost just removing the existing fencing and replacing it. Um, adding netting, you know, making it higher so balls don't come into the outfield, but the, the concession stand. The, the house in the back, uh, the batting cage area, none, none of that is going to be affected by putting up new fencing.
And we're going to move the outfield fence back from the majors to give you the two hundred feet regulation.
Yeah, or even the minors maybe moved in a little bit. Um, we have those dimensions in the, in the plan. But yeah, nothing, nothing that's going to materially affect, I guess I would say, the plans and the, in the, uh, you know, the overall park plans.
And you know, everything, not everything, but the parking, the, the structure next to the house out there. None of that's going to be usable until there's a public works.
Right, right. Yeah, we know that, right?
Yeah, I mean, you just have to factor that into the plans that it's, you know, there's certain contingencies that are going to have to be met.
Right. No, we certainly understand. I mean, you can see it in the budgeting, which is awesome, by the way, and thank you for the, the fields look fantastic. So thank you for that. Um, but we understand it's a long time. I, I don't, you know, I have a couple of years left in this thing. Um, I'm graduating unfortunately, but I don't know, maybe I'll stick around. I'll be that guy who sticks around, but, um. Uh, you know, would it be great to have a bathroom? Of course. Would it be great to have a nicer concession stand? Yes, but. You know, kids first, safety first. I, I think that's the way you got to look at this thing. Um, it's just not worth it to have that chance of someone getting hit in the head or a car getting damaged and. Uh, but yes, to answer your, your question, Michael, the, the, what, what the renderings we've seen. Won't have an impact on the other improvements that are going to be made at the field. Um, and not that it's going to look like Citizens Bank Park, but it's the idea of the fencing, you know, the Phillies did it, right? People are getting hit in the face all across ballparks when they were sitting behind the dugout. So it's, it's a concept of raising the fencing so that to the extent there's foul balls. They're just going to come back into play.
So this is ma- mainly in, on Penland Pike side. It's not going to be high enough. So, and I can't. Is it Old Penland Pike? You can still sit in your car and kind of watch the games from Old Penland Pike on Georgetown.
Um, from Georgia, yeah, exactly. But it would be, right, it would be on the other side of Penland and then also between the fields. Because there's a ton of times where the ball goes, you know, heads up and these seven, eight year olds are playing, you know, that, you know, they're whatever. So those balls are always going to the other field.
There's no fencing in the outfield. It's just same height.
Exactly, exactly. The, the, the netting I'm talking about is more along the, of a backstop slash down the baselines. Um, raising it a little bit. And then the other one, depending on whether or not it's, it's in the budget, I guess, is the fencing along. Penland Blue Belt Pike itself, not the actual ball fields. If you look at that fence, it's, it's like this. It's just, it's. Kids can climb over it. Um, it looks like it's going to fall over, so ideally it would be raised so that it's a deterrent, so kids. Don't jump over it.
Is that part of these estimates?
It is.
I think that was in the plan.
Yeah, it was in the, it was in the plans. I don't know if it was in the.
In the budget item.
Yeah.
Is that number a pretty solid number? Hundred fifty thousand dollars to replace all the fencing?
It's, it's, it's close. Um, I mean, I'll be honest with you guys. The numbers we've seen, they're probably a little higher.
You guys have covered the difference.
One eighty, two hundred is sort of what we're looking for.
Our engineer.
That, that's for both fields, you know, if you're going to say.
Listen, I just feel like this might be an opportunity for a real estate related law firm to maybe put some.
Name the fence.
Alright, alright. Um, but, but the, the number we're looking to, to do it right is probably a little higher than that. I would say two hundred is the number.
Could I just, could I just see if Jim is able to weigh in? Is that an accurate number, Jim?
Adam had sent me e- estimates from, from contractors. My intention was to put a number in this budget that covered that scope. If you're saying that, that one fifty does not cover that scope, then I think we should look at it again and. Get it, get a number in there that does that.
Yeah, that, that number covered. I don't want to say the minimum work that would be done, but that was his, but there was some add-ons that. Again, if you're going to do it, do it right. I'm hoping this is, doesn't have to be done for another twenty years.
Yeah, okay.
That's what I'm saying. I think.
Let's.
A little more just to cover those.
Okay.
Yeah, we can look at that more closely and also see if that encompass raising that other fence to get it. A little bit higher, so kids aren't just flipping over it. And then we can. You know, discuss in more detail, but I do.
In the budget for twenty twenty.
Yeah, I do think, I mean, I, I feel that this should be something that we really prioritize, um, if we're able to do it.
Agreed.
And if there's ARPA funding there and we need to. You know, allocate that, um, I think this is a great use.
I, I've said this before and I'll say it again. There is nothing in the township that has more traffic than that part. I mean, there's, how many kids are in the Little League?
About three fifty, four hundred?
Three hundred and fifty, every single year. There's. Those kids times all their families and friends that come through that park.
Right.
That is our, that, that is the most used facility in the township.
Yeah, we should. You got grandparents, you got little babies, like it's.
No bandages. We should do it the right way. So like to your point, we don't have to do it for twenty.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, and as far as timing goes, it is, you know, baseball is going to be here. We're in the world, you know, we're in the playoffs now, but.
No, you said it right.
Spring training is going to be here before we know it, right? Yeah, I'm, I'm hoping they wouldn't, you know, but, uh, spring training is right around the corner, so. There's, I guess, a little bit of urgency in here. Um.
Okay.
I think the two contract, I don't know how the, we'd have to talk about the whole bidding process work, but the two contractors that we sent you. Did say ideally, you know, next month or two was, would be better for them just to get on their schedule. So anything you do, any questions, feel free to let me know. Thanks again for the.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Um, then the other thing listed, um, here that kind of ties in with this would be, um, there's the local shares grant. Um, it's going to open up in, we're going to submit in November. Um, so we are going to do two applications, one for the traffic signal. And then, um, Gilmore had put together kind of about a one million dollar grant application. And that would include, um, potential improvements that could be the concession stand restroom. Um, the press box, the bullpen, and then adding bollards and ADA, um, spaces. And then also creating a lawn, uh, seating area and a paved seating area and then some landscaping improvements. So, you know, but we saw from the bridge out back that, that's a long process waiting for them to get back. But, um, and then of course, the other one that I mentioned would be, um, the Penland Pike and Trelle and Avenue. Um, um, traffic signal that has been on this list for a few times. We've applied for a couple of different grants. So we're going to go, um, we're going to try local shares for, um, the November application as well.
So just, you're calling the soft dollars the township funded amount? That's the column for the soft dollars?
Yeah, that's basically, um, so the local shares doesn't require a match, but we're thinking to be more competitive. The township would assume. And then there's certain things you can't count. You know, you're only eligible to spend a certain amount, like say ten percent on engineering. So the township would absorb the other soft costs associated with the grant application.
So that's the totality or is it just the fencing that we're, is that the totality of the soft? I was just trying to.
Um, the fencing one in here is.
No, not the fencing, the, the Ingersoll Park, the concession stand bathroom, press box, that entire one where.
Yeah, we're looking at one point two million. Um, the application we'd submit would be for a hundred. Or sorry, for one, for one million and then our match would be about two hundred thousand.
I wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you.
Um, and then the other item listed on here that's park and rec related is, um, a pickleball court. Um, pickleball courts at the YMCA. Um, they had approached the township and, um, requested that. Maybe we partner and we install pickleball courts on, originally it was on an unused area of. Part of already existing parking lot, but I guess after further investigation, they needed to create a new area. Which drove the price up considerably. Um, so. We are kind of looking to get an idea from the board, whether or not this is something that they're interested in. Something that we want to put in the budget for two thousand twenty-four, um, feedback on this item.
I, I, maybe I misunderstood, but I thought. I, I, I remember the discussion when I heard the Y was interested in doing this. And I remember saying the Y wants to put in pickleball courts and somebody answered yes, but they just don't want to pay for it. When did that part come through?
I think, I think you're misunderstanding the conversation. It was never that they were going to pay for it. They were going to partner with us because they had the space and the availability. And what they originally had seen as a flat surface that was already paved. It would be minimal implementation and, and like new, you know, structures and stuff like that. What happened is that original parking area, they were unable to use because of, I don't know if it was stormwater management. Something strange with the ground that we don't quite understand. It wasn't a good fit for pickleball. So they identified another area. But in doing this additional area, then it has to be paved. There has to be greathing. There has to be stormwater management. You know, somewhat of a sound barrier or at least a wind barrier, um, for, for the individuals to pay. And with that, the price went up significantly.
And it came about not as a, hey, we're the YMCA, we want permission to put in pickleball courts. We were, it was more, hey, we recently partnered with another municipality, not the Amber Y, but a different Y. Partnered with a different municipality to do just this. They put. Four or five pickleball courts on. It was the same model, like a existing unused portion of a parking lot. Um, so it was very economical and they, the Y manages it, but opens it to the public, maintains it. Um.
Another question, the Y manages it?
The Y manages it.
I maintains this, it's going to, you know, a reservation list.
Mm-hmm, right, and maintains the courts.
They do?
Yeah, so it's.
So we just build it on, they donate the land and, and all of the sweat behind it.
Right.
And we pay for it.
Correct, in exchange for them.
Open to the public as well. You don't have to be a member of the Y.
Same as well. It's open equally to the public as it is to the Y.
Well, with the exception of like when they do programming, if you're a Y member and you want to do like the nine AM pickleball class or whatever. Um.
Well, in different, instruction is different than sort of open court time for Y members.
No, it would not prioritize open court time for Y members versus.
And there has to be a limit on the number of, on the number of clinics they do to close down the courts.
And we didn't even get that far in the discussions because when the pricing came back. It was like, does the board have an appetite for this cost?
Yeah.
From, from my perspective, I think the benefit to it is this would not replace the proposed pickleball courts in Pen Ambler. It would be in addition to, and would get done a lot faster because Pen Ambler is going to be a grant application for the entire park. You know, where, what, which park are we applying for?
So understanding the need for pickleball or the desire for pickleball to be here and understanding that we're wanting to be at Pen Ambler. And that's what I identified in our master planning as the most appropriate place. Going to take a little bit longer, but the Y was able to offer this as a, not even an alternative, but in an addition to. So that there's more opportunity to play pickleball outside of what will happen in the future and it'll be more immediate. Um, in addition, it's another area. It's not near residential homes. There's going to be no issue with anyone being disturbed. Unless it's extremely loud for some unknown reason. I mean, initially the price of the Y thought they could do this for me and Janine were putting our textbooks together.
Yeah.
And we were just like, we'd cover it first. But I mean, it was extremely low, but then it got to the point where it was, um, not. A good fit and then they had to announce a nor- like not a normal price, but what it was expected cost.
And I don't know if, Jim, if you know mo- more about this, but if there are, you know, my concern with. Um. With, you know, I, there's obviously a need for pickleball, um, courts and sort of waiting till the Pen Ambler Park renovations get done. The grant process, are there like? Public partner. Grants too, where we could, or public private, you know, where we could maybe help the Y. Um, get funding for it or would that kind of take the same amount of time?
Walk right across the street. Ask them to put their name on it. I mean, look, that's the way, that's the way it's. Yeah, when we generally.
We didn't open it up to public comment yet.
Don't worry. Um, I mean, this might be an opportunity for a community partner, you know, a corporate sponsor to.
And they are a community partner and, and, you know, building upon that relationship. Partnering with them would help extend that relationship and ensure that, you know, they are a valued partner in our community. So why not utilize if they're available and willing and able? and able to assist us in hosting pickleball courts on their property?
I mean, the the strong pro to it being on the Y's property too is that they maintain it, you know? And I mean, that, of course, we haven't worked out any sort of agreement that we have to talk with Neil and and get all that stuff approved and go up the chain, but my thought was, you know, wow, if we're putting up a significant amount of money for this, the benefit would be they have to maintain it. We would set certain standards by which they need to maintain it. Um, and it's off our plate, whereas we have so many other facilities that our guys need to maintain and that our parks folks need to deal with.
So. Devil will be in the detail, I'm sorry.
So when it needs to be resurfaced, it's, didn't we just pay two hundred thousand for resurfacing
Basketball.
a basketball court? So I could imagine the pickleball resurfacing is gonna be that much, or is the Y gonna pay that much every few years?
I don't, I mean, that's why, I mean,
That's what we need to figure out, yeah.
I think the devil's in the details as far as what that agreement's gonna look like. But again, if I was mistaken that they were gonna put in the pickleball court, I have a hard time believing they're gonna pay to resurface it. I think they're probably gonna maintain up until a certain number, and then capital projects will be on us. But again, I think this is an opportunity. We could go out into the community and find somebody that, you know, might be willing to put their name on the courts and you're gonna get a lot of publicity because it's packed. I mean, there's not a pickleball court you could just walk onto.
And it would give us six courts instead of three, I mean, or whatever it is, seven, eight courts instead of. What are we proposing in Pen Ambler, three, four?
Four. So it's four and four, it's eight totality?
There'd be four courts at the Y and four courts at Pen Ambler eventually. So one thing I was just thinking about as we were, we're talking here is that the Y sort of proposed four courts and the four courts that they had gotten a quote for were uh tighter packed than what the you know, USA Pickleball recommends. So when we started to you know, put the cost estimate together, we sort of, it it's more paving, it's more, you know, that's kind of why the cost went up a little bit too. And then there's that stormwater management um, aspect of it. But like, if you were gonna build a stormwater management facility, uh, you're, you're got a ton of upfront costs there to, it's gonna probably have to be underground and that, you know, there's the design and all that, like, you could economies of scale probably put six courts in there for uh, a lot less per court than the the four are. So that's something to consider also.
That's what I was wondering.
Is there any?
Whereas like you wouldn't have the space at Pen Ambler
Right.
to put six courts in.
Hmm.
Is there any work that we could do in-house that we wouldn't have to farm out?
It's not our property, right? Is there a limitation because it's not our property?
Well, I don't, I mean, it, I I I'm just saying, so like.
Like the paving?
Yeah, whatever it is.
I think that.
We can do that we wouldn't have to that, to to sort of. Is the two fifty for a hundred percent of an outside contractor?
Yeah, I I figured the two fifty was for a a public bid and also soft costs for design and administration of of the public bid and and all that. That I mean, that's, that's an all in number.
And and the fencing and
It's like a wind barrier.
I would guess it'd be more than two fifty, actually.
Like, I think it's around around two fifty. I mean, it was about three hundred and some thousand to do it at Pen Ambler Park, and you have to clear an area and you have to bring in fill to sort of ra- raise that area up. So that's the cost you're saving by doing it at at the Y, because from what I saw, their locations were relatively flat.
But so like the initial grading of the area, that that's not, that's nothing we could do in-house at Public Works, or it is? No, no, understood. But I mean, I'm I'm wondering if there's some way to
There's not one at the Y in terms of grading that's necessary, because the prime location that they're proposing, my understanding is it was originally uh, planned to be an addition on the building. It's like if you're looking at the Y, it's all the way to the right. And so it's pretty flat already.
Behind?
Because, no, if you're like facing the front of the Y.
Oh, so left.
All the way to the right. That was where the park, that's where the park.
Originally, oh, that's where they originally.
So all the way to the right up against wooded pond? Correct.
Yeah, there was gonna be a bigger, they and they.
So the front part of the building or behind the building?
The front part of the building.
Okay, I can't picture that space.
It's flat grass.
Six pickleball courts.
It's flat grass, and it's like where they have, um, when they have their healthy kids' day, they put up all the bounce houses and all the tables get set up there. It's sort of like a yard. Um, and it's pretty flat.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So what's the decision here?
Um, we have to pri- we have to prioritize if this is an appetite. We have an appetite to consider this as a priority for in a capital project, but not even necessarily its capital project, but.
Yeah, I I would be in favor of it, but we need to have a little more information, uh, to to know what kind of deal it's gonna be for a long term strategy, I guess.
I think we didn't get to that point, uh, to to Janine's point. We stopped because we need to know if the board had an appetite whatsoever.
Okay.
Before we could say, Neil, okay, engage with the Y to
Yeah.
to determine what the lease agreement.
But you got my vote, okay. Who else?
Explore, explore it in more detail.
Yes, Neil, Kathy.
Way in.
Um, well, at this point, we're just talking about it's a placeholder. This is not, um, I mean, it's a big, it's a big item, big number. And I agree with Tessie, I agree with Mike. I would really need to know more of how this relationship is gonna work moving forward.
Okay.
And I would like to see an added benefit for lower granted residents.
Outside of, out of sight of the.
Like having their own playtime or something like that.
Okay. Prioritizing lower granted residents.
Yeah, I mean, quarter million dollars.
Yeah, and maybe some cost sharing going forward, but uh, I I don't think two hundred and fifty thousand is unreasonable. We just, as I said, spent two hundred thousand resurfacing a basketball court, and that was already there.
Mm hmm.
So two fifty to me for a brand new facility doesn't.
And to Mike's point, I, there is, you know, call it naming opportunities, call it sponsorship, call it what you will. You could really, this could be a good community rallying, um, endeavor. We have many interested pickleball players. We have many institutions, corporations, residents that can cut big checks. I don't think we should overlook that. I know it will delay it.
Mm hmm.
Um, but I think it would be just like Penland, what Woods was twenty five years ago, a nice rallying point. Get some um, financial participation with some stakeholders.
Yeah. Any comments from the public? You wanna, you could, you could just come up and say your name. People online can hear you.
Pedro Geraldino. My wife Leslie and I have lived here in Lower Gwinnett for about thirty years or so. Um, some people call me Mr. Pickleball. Um, I want to thank the township for making its agenda in minutes in documents available on the internet. A couple of days ago, I went into the website of the township and I found the materials related to tonight's meeting. So, um, I thought it was wonderful that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars had been earmarked for pickleball in two thousand twenty four. That was very exciting news. And I did a copy and paste of the portions that are uh, available to the public, and I shared them with other pickleball players here in Lower Gwinnett. And I asked them, um, what do you think about it? And I called this afternoon, Kathy Morris, and we had a very nice, very good lengthy conversation this afternoon, where I was able to give her some of the feedback that I got. Um, so what I'm about to say does not represent only my point of view. It represents the point of view of all the people that gave me feedback um, during the weekend. There seem to be two major problems with the idea of investing two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of Lower Gwinnett taxpayers into a facility that is going to be managed and controlled by the Y MCA of Ambler. Uh, problem number one is that the access and availability of the courts to Lower Gwinnett residents and taxpayers is gonna be far reduced at the Y than at Pen Ambler. And the reason for that is that right now there are several hundred pickleball players already members of the Y. Their gym is earmarked from eight o'clock in the morning until twelve o'clock noon to play pickleball. In fact, they just revised the schedule in one of the gyms, at least it's from seven o'clock in the morning until twelve o'clock. If you go there in the middle of the day, you will find that there are dozens and dozens of people interested in playing. More of half of them are sitting around waiting for their turn to play. If and when the Ambler Y has its pickleball courts outdoors, what is gonna happen is that those people that have been playing indoors and waiting indoors are now going to move outside. And then the Lower Gwinnett people who are not YMCA members will come and say, hey, we wanna play. And they will be added to the waiting list of all the people that are trying to get onto the courts. So that is problem number one. If you are going to invest two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of taxpayers' dollars, you will get more bang for Lower Gwinnett residents if you do it in Pen Ambler than if you do it at the Y. That's problem number one. Problem number two is the Ambler Y has programs for children, and it requires to have very strict control in identity of every adult person that goes into the premises of the Y. So if you go to the Y for any reason and you are not already a member, the first thing that you have to do is to wait around for a clerk at the front desk to take your driver's license, and they will very thoroughly and methodically enter your name, address, et cetera, et cetera, into their database. So that if there were any problems, any issues, any crime committed, then they would have access to the names and identity of every single person that was at the Y on that particular day. So when the document says that the court is gonna be available to Lower Gwinnett residents, it does not necessarily mean that the access is gonna be easy or fast. You're gonna have to spend a good ten fifteen minutes entering all this data so that then you can walk over to the pickleball courts and then wait for your turn to play. As opposed to investing the same amount of money in Pen Ambler, where Lower Gwinnett people will be able to access the courts immediately on a first come, first served basis. So we pickleball community, Lower Gwinnett, recognize that it is up to the supervisors of Lower Gwinnett to decide whether you want to give two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of taxpayers' dollars to the Ambler Y, where most of that benefit is going to be enjoyed by people who are not Lower Gwinnett residents or taxpayers. If you look at the population of Lower Gwinnett relative to Ambler and Maple Glen, we do share the same zip code in Horsham. And what was the other area, Kathy, that you mentioned? Upper Dublin. Less than fifteen percent of the total population belongs to Lower Gwinnett. So essentially, eighty five percent of the dollars that you give to the Ambler Y are going to go to the benefit of an outside population outside Lower Gwinnett. The point was made in this conversation that there are opportunities to join forces with a community. And and yes, there are, and there are two that we have been bringing up year after year after year, and it is very disappointing that no apparent progress has been made. One of them is the Wizahickin High School. We just saw in your publications that um, that Wizahickin High School was very receptive, was very supportive in using their facility for their recent uh, harvest festival. They have wonderful tennis courts. Have we explored the possibility of relining some of those tennis courts for use in pickleball? I don't know. I don't think so. Uh, another possibility is the Innovation Center. Um, they have lots of flat land, lots of empty uh, parking lots. Um, they did put in place a um, a fitness trail. Uh, have we explored using that facility in in the, a part of the Innovation Center parking lots that are abandoned to convert them to pickleball? So there are other lower expense alternatives out there. If we approach the community, if we're willing to approach the community, why have we not done that so far? I don't know. But two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of taxpayers' dollars from Lower Gwinnett should be invested in Pen Ambler. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Pickleball, I just have a question. Um, uh, so Janine and I, when we were having these conversations, actually hit on a lot of the points of concern that you addressed. Meaning, how do we ensure that Lower Gwinnett residents have access to this first and prioritized? And it's not something that's kind of overrun with members of the Y. And so they talked about what they did in this other municipality, and were util- utilizing that as a model in presenting it to us, and such that they have an online system where you put in all of your information ahead of time. You don't necessarily have to go into the Y. Um, and you enter all of your information, you created accounts, kind of similar to Calendie. I don't know if you know what that is, but you put your information in, and then you're allowed to go online and reserve. And the priority is given to the township residents first, almost blocked out and restricted if your information does not match up as a township resident. Additionally, that checking in with the clerk and that that process that I've had to endure is probably as well as you have is eliminated because once it's reserved, your access to the court is unique to you, and it's unique to your reservation. So they did address some of those concerns. I'm not sure if it would be enough to satisfy the concerns of of you and the other people.
What you're describing right now is news to us. Uh, it sounds very good. Uh, it would be a welcome wrinkle in in this whole process. Uh, that is absolutely wonderful. Here's another idea that came up during the weekend in in the conversations that we were having. Um, and to the point of how can we increase the benefit to Lower Gwinnett citizens going to the Y to play pickleball? Uh, the Y could make its pickleball indoor pickleball courts available to Lower Gwinnett residents in the wintertime. So that just like we let them use the Lower Gwinnett pickleball courts in the summertime, they let us go into their indoor pickleball courts in the wintertime. That would be another way of increasing value for the Lower Gwinnett people if we're going to end up spending two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a facility for the Y.
I I appreciate that feedback. We can't, we we were unable to move forward in the conversation as it related to working out those finer details, because we need to know how the entire work felt and get feedback from the public. So now that we have that, we can at least have our solicitor engaged to see what could be worked out and if it could be worked out. And it doesn't mean that that money is being taken away from Pen Ambler, because I think Pen Ambler is a priority regardless going forward.
It it was not being taken away from Pen Ambler. It was delightful to see that.
It's in addition to.
It was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars readily available for pickleball. Then the question is, where do you make the best use of? Do you do it in Pen Ambler? Or do you do it?
Yeah.
In the Y? Or do you do it somewhere else, whether it is the Innovation Center or the Wizahickin High School?
Yeah, readily available.
Uh, yeah, I would say, there's nothing in this budget that I would say, this is a wish list. This is, this is, this is not. There's not two hundred, to my knowledge, there's not two hundred and fifty thousand dollars earmarked for pickleball. That's what we're talking about. Are we going to earmark whatever amount of money for? It's a priority, obviously. Um, and the things you raise are good points. Um, worth exploring. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I I would like to address the issue with with the high school. It's my recollection that we years ago talked to the high school, and that wasn't an option.
We did engage in a conversation, and I think at that moment in time, we were told that that wasn't an avenue that we could pursue.
Right.
I don't know if that has changed since that initial conversation.
Yeah, they they were, uh, yeah, uh, possibly. Um, at the time, they didn't want to reline their tennis courts. Um, so.
And I think there's a, you know, again, there's, there's problems with putting it at ship, but I'm not an avid pickleball player, but I play enough. My wife's an avid pickleball player. Um, I'm not sure ship is gonna want that many people coming onto their property all the time. I mean, it's an amenity for their people. I mean, it's an amenity for their people. I don't think it's necessarily supposed to be an amenity for the township, but these are all things that we should explore and we will.
No, no, that exercise, uh, that's for.
I understand, but there's, there, the people that are going to use that outdoor exercise area versus the people that are going to use pickleball.
Oh, I agree. Yeah, it's a different number. Right.
Yeah.
Right.
I don't know if I've ever seen anyone on that outdoor workout area.
It may not be very well advertised, but um, it's, it was intended to be for the whole immunity.
So is board are we comfortable with having us pursue what this could look like or how it could be arranged before we consider it any further?
Definitely worth conversation.
Okay.
For sure.
Okay.
They have land.
Okay, so then we'll just leave the two fifty in as a placeholder and obviously that number will be refined with more information. Okay. Okay, and then the next item that I noted in the memo was stormwater management. Um, we completed the Houston Creek Stormwater Study. The, that grant is being closed out, so that's completed. Um, it'll be completely done by the end of the year. So um, that that study though outlined a few projects that could be pursued. And the first, the, um, we talked about um, doing some upgrades and we are thinking that we'll first do the road reprofiling. I don't know if Jim wants to explain that a little bit more and then kind of see the impact.
The intersection of Francis and Knight where the water main break was and then it was repaved and the suspicion is that the the crown of the road was lost and some water's going down Francis that maybe didn't historically do do that. So um, survey that intersection and then uh, reprofile it so that the water continues down Knight.
So. Is that the only recommendation initially or?
Uh, no, the other recommendation was the driveway culvert. Remove and replace with something with larger and more capacity.
So are these like in tandem? Um, or do we need to prioritize? Meaning, can you do the road profiling as well as pursuing the, the, the bridge culvert? Or the driveway culvert?
They don't need to happen in tandem. One could happen without the other. I just thought that those two items were high, they were high on the priority of the study.
Yeah.
And I don't want to call a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a low hanging fruit, but in comparison to some of the other larger numbers with the basin and chasing grants and stuff, it it could certainly happen faster.
Yeah, and the the basin that we do want to pursue that as well, but that's a great candidate for grant funding. So.
I was gonna say, okay. So if there's grant funding that comes appropr- or that is appropriate for the.
Yeah, we would definitely seek that out.
This is the basin at Knight and Houston or is it expanding the ba- basin at the administration building?
Were you talking about the?
I'm thinking I would, I would, if we were going to write a grant, I think that we we would write it for both.
Okay. And so has anyone engaged with the school decision?
Uh, I don't, have we talked to the?
We have not.
Yeah.
All right.
I mean, we sent them the study, the final study. But we haven't discussed like pursuing the um the grant itself or the basin, but but we we have mentioned, like, they have you know, they know that we're going to come to look for some type of partnership. So they're, they're not going to be caught off guard if we, when we go and discuss this. They've, they've expressed, you know, that they're on board with that and they did provide um a part of the match for the grant, for the study that was performed as well. So.
I mean, okay. I mean, I'm, I'm for us addressing all three in tandem at the same time. In second, you know, not consecutively, but concurrently. So um that's where I stand. But I'll leave it up to the board if you have any additional comments. I mean, the stormwater flooding issue is a consistent issue that's been over twenty years. So.
Over a million dollars in funding?
For the three that we're talking about? No, you're looking at all of it.
Um, what are we?
Just the three at bottom of page two.
Just the three at the bottom of page two?
Yeah, just these three.
About a million dollars? Did I misread that?
Oh, well, it's in tandem, but one is, one's our, but we're looking for grant funding for this one.
Right, I understand, but when you.
Oh, yeah.
This is.
Yeah. But this one is not, the third one is with grant.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. Yeah, and I, and I agree. We, we need to address it, but I'm just saying right now, we don't have the money for.
Oh, absolutely. No.
It's taken currently. I'd rather.
Well, I think concurrently with, yeah, yeah, as as much as we can with our money, but understand that 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 is strictly with grant.
It's going to be, yeah, yeah, no, I agree. Let's, let's definitely fix the road.
Okay. Does anyone else have any opinion, comments, suggestions?
I think the sequence of events that uh, that have been laid out would make sense to to move forward with the most straightforward parts of that plan as quickly as possible.
Okay. Catherine, Janine?
No, all good.
Okay. All right.
Hey, um, the next item on here is the road program. So Fred has provided the um, the list of roads that were identified for the two thousand and twenty-four road program. And that totaled about seven hundred and forty-two thousand. And then um, on your on your sheet, I had shown the road program along with um offsetting the monies that we get in through liquid fuels and then building that up because the idea is that he wants to build up funds for more of a road maintenance program where we're not just kind of backing into the, the number that we get. Um, instead, we have an actual plan for um, you know, annual maintenance. Um, so I, Fred, if you want to talk more about that, you can go ahead.
Uh, no, I think you summed it up pretty well. We've been using what we receive in liquid fuels as the basis for our paving program, which has been fine. Our roads are in great shape. But as you probably are aware, lots of our roads and developments were built and dedicated to us around the same time. So lots of them are going to be due for paving at the same time. So we'll have an increase in road paving need coming up in the future. So we're, we don't want to fall any behind and pile them up. We want to knock roads off when they need to be done now. So it's not a huge jump in one year. It's kind of a gradual increase up to that point where we're doing all those roads.
Do you feel like double the current budget is what's required for that? And and that is, is that in perpetuity? Like, is it going to be seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars every year for the rest?
Well, yeah, I think, and we're trying to smooth that out. I, I think we're going to hit years where there's probably way more, but then it'll come back down because all those roads will be paved new again. But we'll try to space them out so it's not a huge number one year and then nothing, you know, in the years after that.
I mean, do you have a sense of when this sort of half of the, you know, road is going to be required?
Yes, like, like Gwinnett and Noel and some of those big neighborhoods are due for paving between twenty twenty-seven, twenty thirty-two, somewhere in there. That's probably going to be the biggest bunch of roads that are all kind of the same age, same condition. So we'd like to make sure we have everything that needs to be done before that done. And then maybe we can pick some of them off early and push some of them back later and and kind of smooth that out.
I, I I get it. I just think it would be better, I think it would be easier for me to conceptualize if I had sort of that schedule that you're talking about, like this year is this, next year is that, then we have this huge uptick in five years. Is that, I think, will just help, it'll make it easier for funding purposes to fund into that.
Sure, and I, and I have.
You're doing, that's what you're.
I have a good list and a projected date, which we reevaluate every year because some roads, you know, you think it's fine and then a bad winter or a broken water main or something damages the road and you need to re look at it when you need to pave it.
Didn't we at the last public works meeting or maybe the public works meeting before the last one? We, you had a list and we went, we went through it and like the numbers didn't make sense.
Yes, the numbers of the reconstruction didn't make sense. I don't know where they came from. They weren't, yeah, they weren't. There was no formula. It wasn't from the engineer. I only had the like the next couple of years worth of the engineering cost because I went out with Ed and he gave us a, Ed Brown from Gilmore. Gave us a, you know, an idea how much it would be to pave the roads and then we pared it down to fit into this year what was absolutely necessary. So I have some estimated cost on other roads other than this year. I'm sure that we could get the estimated costs on those other roads updated. I don't know if like by the next meeting or by the end of the year, but I'm sure that that Ed and Jim can knock that out.
I think that will be helpful just for budgeting purposes, right? It can be, and so that we know what it's going to look like three, five, ten years down the line. And 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 I do remember us talking about it. The, the numbers were so wildly off that it's impossible for us. I don't think the answer is, hey, we're not going to do this. This is insanity. I think it's just more like, we just need to know the numbers so that we can fund it properly.
Sure, sure. I could work on that.
So you think five hundred and eleven thousand is an accurate estimation for this year?
I, I thought it was seven hundred.
Seven forty-two.
No, it's seven forty-two, but I, I'm reflecting the liquid fuels in there.
Yeah, so she subtracted it. So.
Next year, twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, that's the twenty.
The twenty twenty-three projection in the line, it says five eleven.
Oh, yes, that's what we spent. Yes.
That's, that's accurate. I just wanted to make sure we didn't go over this year. Okay.
No.
So Fred, are you sort of pulling apart the liquid fuels tax um from what we need each year? In other words, the liquid fuels tax might go up and down, up and down and, but we want to stay.
Yeah, we don't want to be bound to what, just what we get from
Okay.
Liquid fuels, but obviously we need to take that into account for your budgeting purposes.
Yeah. Which is that, and I don't know if this is how you wanted it in here, but the, that's how, that's what I was doing. I, I took the total amount for twenty twenty-four from the um, estimate that we received. Then the liquid fuel projection for twenty twenty-four was three sixty-five. So um the proposed budgeted amount is six hundred thousand and that's to build in additional funds for future maintenance to kind of start that process of adding.
Some of that, a small piece of that is going to the bank.
Yes, yes. And I don't know if that's not the way you wanted in there.
We have additional funds in our, we didn't spend liquid fuels down to zero. There was, had been funds built up in years past.
So there, that's what I was wondering.
We could spend more liquid fuels money than we're allocated for next year because we have a fund balance in there.
We know what that funds is.
But.
I don't have the fund balances.
There is another component to that. We also have been using that to buy road salt. So we need to account for road salt with the liquid fuels money or from somewhere else. That's, we didn't buy any road salt. Well, we bought the minimum amount of road salt last year that you could possibly do. You have to agree to buy some. So we bought that, we're full. But that money should have stayed in the liquid fuels account towards the fund balance because we didn't hardly buy any salt, but it was budgeted last year.
Yeah.
It's liquid fuels money.
And I think Mimi's plan is to provide like an overall, like give everybody an update on all the fund balances to, yeah, before we go through any type of approval process. So you'll have that information.
Okay.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thanks, Fred.
Um, so that kind of is it for the projects. The next little section deals with um, equipment purchases. So if anybody has any questions about any of the projects on here that, that we didn't discuss, um we can discuss it or we can move on to the equipment purchases.
I'm just.
And there's plenty, I mean, you still have time, you can, you can question things too after the meeting that, you know, it's, there's still time.
Long budget process. My favorite time of year.
Under building projects, number two.
Uh huh.
Uh, has it, uh, has it been decided that we are going to demolish the McCormick House or is that just best guess?
Um, I think it's just in anticipation if that's the route that the board takes, we wanted to allocate money. This, this was, this project was in here this year um, with improvements to the McCormick House. And we don't have, like, we're probably, we need to make a decision about what the future of the McCormick House is. So that we don't budget for, we don't do any more improvements if the ultimate goal is to demolish it. But I'm not sure if, I don't think anybody, I don't know if anybody decided yet.
But, that's all.
Is, is the card access control system for all township buildings or just the township building? Meaning like the community uh, the community center of Henland as well or just this building?
I think it's just here.
Just here?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the price that we got was just for here.
Okay. But somebody would still need to come unlock and lock the community center and and needed to utilize it.
Um, yes, as far as I know, but um, that was actually something we, that.
We talked about that before.
Yeah.
It can't be done remotely in this day and age?
Well, and that, I think when Peter from Divit came out, I think that qualifies under um, property and liability grants that we get from Divit. We talked to, like, I asked him about the lock, the key, the locking, the um, Penland Woods building before. So I, I don't actually think that would be on a capital budget. I think it's going to be less expensive than a capital
Okay.
project would be.
Okay.
But we can definitely, I'll add that to confirm. Um, so the stuff on the capital purchase list is pretty um you know, pretty standard. Uh, what I outlined in the, what we really wanted feedback is more so the vehicle purchasing. Um, so the um, public or police department has a vehicle in here for a hybrid vehicle, which is a replacement vehicle for um I'm not sure which one it's.
Two thousand fourteen floor explore?
Yes, yeah.
I didn't see that.
On the last page of Jamie's memo?
Yeah.
Don't you, uh, oh, excuse me, in the budget, it's best page two.
Yeah, this is like the separate page. It's underneath the pack.
Oh, it's.
Yeah, it was separate. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I was looking for it.
Are there grants available for that, for the hybrid purchase? And I don't mean grants. I mean, are there in um, incentives?
Um, I don't believe so. No.
And that's to replace an existing vehicle. We're going to have to buy it anyway.
Correct. And that's when we dig into the details, I was going to give you the three prices. That would be the high price.
High price.
Correct.
Sixty-five is the high price?
Correct, because that's a hybrid. If you go just, you know, a straight vehicle was around sixty-eight hundred cheaper. So just giving.
And you have any concerns about?
Well, it's still a gas vehicle.
No, I understand that.
Okay.
Do you, do you have any concerns about uh its use in what it needs to be used for, for law enforcement?
Well, it'll be, it's going to be an unmarked vehicle. It's a, it's going to be a staff vehicle. So I'm okay with it.
And why is, is a straight electric vehicle not an option for an unmarked staff vehicle?
Correct.
Just because of the limitation on the distance with the, with the, with the battery, right?
It, and.
We're not there yet.
We're not there yet. And this three nights ago was a prime example for myself. I had to stop in the middle of the night and get gas.
I will point out to you, as you're probably aware, surrounding municipalities have started buying EVs for their police.
I know of one, Upper Providence has bought a F one fifty Lightning. That's the only one I'm aware of and they're.
I think there's more than that, but I, I'll check on that and let you know, but.
The only, the only police vehicle coming out is a Ford Bronco. It's coming out next year in a police package. I just don't like to be first when, and and experimenting on something like this. I don't think it's.
I don't think we're first.
Being included.
In law enforcement, I think we'd be close to first. In a straight electric vehicle. I only know of one. But then there could be some in some big cities or something like that, but I'm I, and we can talk about it. I'm, I'm more than open to an idea. But the twenty-four. But the twenty four seven demands of a police vehicle not allow time to charge.
How often do you? You get a new vehicle every year or so? Like, we replace something almost every year?
We're we're on a, we have a plan, we have a schedule.
Right, so. As technology improves, it's not like we're gonna all of a sudden be out of having to replace vehicles.
Correct.
So, okay. Okay.
Correct. And there's a, I mean, the second part of that vehicle, I don't know if they're gonna ask me about that next is that, the um. The ATV that's listed there also.
Uh, the Ranger?
Yes, the Polaris Ranger, and that's nineteen thousand dollars, but we don't have any place to store it. If we get permission to buy it. So we were including a trailer that it would sit in to to be covered. And also would allow for access to move it if we wanted to use it at different facilities. But we have, um, to quote you from our town hall meeting last week, Mike, we have twenty six miles of trails that we're not patrolling at all. Um, and we had an incident a few nights ago where we had to uh, bring the fire companies out. And we were walking the trails and in the middle of night walking trails, you're just, you're just kidding yourself.
So this would be to be able to get along.
It would be for trails.
All terrain for the trails or the woods?
Trail purposes.
Okay.
Um, in specifically lower Quinnet.
And would it, would it allow, like, in the event that somebody was injured on a trail?
Yes, I talked to um, Danny Zaff, the chief of Amber Amens. There's a five hundred hour. Clip on adjustment where we can attach um, a gurney to the back of it, go and get somebody. Take them on the vehicle and get them out.
Not to you, okay.
Yeah, that, we talked about that at the um, volunteer meeting the other night.
Is that price all in with the trailer chief or?
Yes, it is. The vehicle is like nineteen thousand trailer through, and these are all um, coast stars. Um, the trailer would be seventy three hundred. Uh, cuz I talked to Fred about it. It it has to be kept in in covered area. It can't be outside. It could be, yeah, it is all terrain, but it would make sense to have a vehicle to move it also. If, you know.
If you're gonna, you need to get it somewhere in the town.
You could drive it.
You could, but it maybe not.
Correct, we would use it for the, you know, for the community events for Fourth of July. We'd have it down there. We'd have, we'd have it in different places. And if we were called to a trail up on Sweetford Road, we're gonna trail right there.
Yeah.
And and get it there a lot quicker.
Correct.
All terrain, snow, ice.
Everything, yeah. And we we uh, we looked at a couple that are out there. Whitping was our nearest neighbor to have one and we, we copied what, what they got. Um, it comes from out near Penn State, is the only authorized coast stars dealer in Pennsylvania.
I'm kinda surprised that we don't have one, given all the trails and.
I was um. I wasn't surprised, but it it could have been used last week.
Yeah.
It it should have been used last week.
I just assumed EMS had it, but I guess no.
They don't, they borrow it.
Oh, okay.
He was thrilled when I told him we were thinking about getting one.
Okay, so the twenty seven thousand includes the trailer. And the fuel and the little clip on, does it include?
Correct, uh, it did, it did, it did not. That was a five hundred hour add on that I did, I. When I submitted all this, I wasn't aware of that part, portion of it.
So around twenty seven.
Maybe they'll throw it in instead of the undercover.
I mean, I would make make it, I'd be okay moving that as a high priority. If we can, it sounds like something that we.
I would prioritize this, honestly.
I agree.
And if it's minimal use, but it would serve value in an emergency.
It's 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 minimal use, but when needed, it's invaluable.
And so presumably it'll last, you know, a long time cuz you, you guys aren't gonna be like ripping on the rails every.
I think it would last a long time and I think it's it's value, as we see when we turn over a vehicle. The value when we turn them on municipal is extremely high. We turn, we turn in a Tahoe and we get fifteen thousand dollars back on a vehicle that cost us forty, ten years later. The value of ATVs.
Makes sense, and especially hearing all the limbs falling on trails. It's just, it's gonna take one.
That was my concern, or somebody just has to twist their ankle on a trail.
Yeah, and and I'm asked, I'm asked constantly for to add a bike unit, add a motorcycle unit. And there's a lot of, you know, feel good things out there. This is something I think would be um, useful in an emergency.
Yep, good idea, Chief.
Uh, how have you historically evacuated people from the trails?
Uh, we would call fire company to come out. It hasn't happened a lot, Tassie. I can't, I recall two incidents in ten years.
I'm right to recall in at least two, yeah.
Yeah, we're probably talking about the same two. We would call the fire company out to assist and walk the person out. We re, we, we, we had one a couple weeks ago, but he was a young kid and he walked out. He had a shoulder injury, so he was fine. He was back at the ponds over here. If it wouldn't have been a shoulder, it would have been a leg, but he was, you know, ten years old. We would have picked him up and carried him. But there, there's gonna be future cases where we won't be able to do that.
Um, okay, and then the other vehicle is a public works vehicle, which is in the budget. And this is um, consideration for an electric um, F one fifty truck. Um, that would be an electric vehicle and this would be in addition to the fleet. It wouldn't be a replacement. Um, there is grant funding available. John has prepared information on that. Um, and he's virtual if you have questions about that and you want him to go over it. But um, Fred, I don't know if you wanna talk about that.
Sure, um, in discussion with John and Mimi and Santino, our road foreman. We were discussing our vehicle replacement, what we use the vehicles for, our operations. And uh, about starting to change over to electric vehicles. Right now, there's no truck that can replace our gas or diesel powered trucks with the capabilities they have. The F one fifty is only a half ton truck. We use three quarter ton trucks. But a lot of our operation isn't using that full capability. It's transportation, it's putting tools in the truck and going to a location. Which is something an electric vehicle can do. We are adding another person to our department. So it is something, if we had it, we would use it. If we don't have it, we have other trucks to, you know, we're using, so. It would be a chance to get one, see what it can do. We would definitely use it. It wouldn't be parked sitting around. But it's just something that came up and there's grant funding available and we put it in there for your consideration.
Is it, is the grant funding, I don't know?
Yeah, I can um.
Is is the, will the grant funding, is it for the entire cost of the truck or is it a portion?
Yeah, hi, John, John Farrell's here, jumping in. Hopefully all can hear me. Um, the grant funding would cover um, a portion of the, basically the delta between a gas powered vehicle and electric. So the grant that's being offered right now by PAD EP is for seventy five hundred dollars for the purchase of that type of truck.
Oh, so we, we talked about this at the last public works meeting and um.
Wait a minute, seventy five hundred dollars?
Seventy five hundred.
Okay.
And and I'll, I'll tell you what concerns me and I, we talked about this and I'll, I'll, I'll raise it in this public setting. It, it sounds like. If we wanna figure out is an EV vehicle something that can be used for public works? Not for transporting people because that's not what you would use it for. Then it has to be a three quarter ton vehicle. This isn't a three quarter ton. So we're just getting another vehicle to get another vehicle so that we can A, transport people around and. B, show people that we're serious about. You know.
Reduction in carbon emission, reduc- reducing our carbon footprint.
And C, dipping our toe in the water, but it's not really a dipping of the toe in the water because it's not serving any purpose other than to. If it was a three quarter ton vehicle and you just had a snowplow on it, no brainer, we do it tomorrow, hundred percent. But this isn't that. It's not replacing anything. It's adding an expense to the township. And I don't, like, you know, again, I don't want it to be, well, are we gonna get a EV vehicle to drive people around? Are we gonna get a ATV so we can pull people out of the trail? I I don't want it to be a choice for us where we have to choose. If, again, it was a three quarter ton truck that we can put a plow on, I'm a yes yesterday on it. But this doesn't seem to do any, it doesn't move the needle, I don't think.
No, it couldn't replace our current trucks, so we, yes, it. It only moves the needle that we're reducing emissions while we're using that truck instead of something else, but our overall operation, it's not.
But we're not even reducing our footprint because we're not getting rid of anything.
No, but it would replace the usage of some trucks some days.
Didn't, didn't that read somewhere with five thousand miles in a year?
Yeah.
Or not even gonna be using it that.
Yeah, I mean, that's what our usual pickups do is five thousand miles.
Yeah, I mean, like I hear what you're saying, it feels like it's more of a feel good signal to our community that we're.
And i- if, yeah, and if you're, if this isn't the way you wanna go, and honestly. Uh, for that price, a three quarter ton. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do something to show that we're serious about this RF one hundred thing, but um, you know, fifty five thousand dollar vehicle. Up to seventy five hundred dollars in rent. I don't know, might be some other way, another um, vehicle, no pun intended, to show. Our willingness to, you know. Actually be at RF one hundred goals.
Is there a sense, Fred, on when like a three quarter ton will be there?
That I was gonna ask, is it?
So, not soon because this is how Ford particularly is working it. They are marketing towards expensive trucks. They. They get a bigger margin on their sales to a consumer who's buying top of the line. Well, we don't buy top, like, our three quarter ton pickups are fleet trucks, you know, they have roll up crank windows. They don't make any. Money, so there's no incentive for them to. Develop the three quarter ton truck because even on a regular three quarter ton truck, they're not making that much money. And they're already being subsidized for the electric truck. They wanna make as much money as they can on it by selling, you know, their platinum model. Most homeowners aren't buying a three quarter ton pickup truck to drive to Home Depot. They're driving their F one fifty. So. It's probably not gonna be soon until they get all the rollout on the. Half ton trucks and other cars before they, you know, they're, they'll make that margin on SUVs. So their next move might be the Expedition Explorer, not the three quarter ton. Pickup truck. That's what the dealer explained to me. It made sense when he was telling me that, yeah. So, uh, you know, unfortunately, like, our fleet trucks are gonna be kinda last in line to, to get that technology.
Well, I I applaud your um, your initiative. I know that um, I've asked you in the past. To look for electric vehicles uh, to add to the fleet. And uh, if it doesn't make sense to buy one because it's not gonna serve the purpose we need, then. Uh, I would agree that maybe now is not the best time, but i- if you have a. Uh, car, a sedan that is used specifically to transport people. And maybe it only gets five, you you know, used for five thousand miles a year. If we can switch that vehicle to an EV, uh, then we might be justified, but um. I would just uh, ask you to keep your eye out there for other opportunities.
Absolutely.
It's just, just to confirm with uh, with John, I don't know if John's still on, is this the AFIG grant?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Okay. Are there any questions from the public?
Um, so that's really, that's really, I mean, the other items on here are kind of standard if anybody has any questions about them. The admin stuff, there's quite a bit for um. IT, so we are up, like, it's going to be time to replace our servers. So we do have to budget for a server replacement in twenty twenty four. And we have to make the determination whether or not we're going to replace with physical servers or we are gonna move everything to the cloud. Um, administratively, I think the direction we're trying to go is a cloud. Um, but you know, the costs are what the costs are and we kind of have two separate things. We have the normal admin um, network, but then we also have Munis, which is its own. Um, it's our financial software and that's kind of its own animal, which is a little disconnected from the township. So we're in kind of a situation where um, we can convert all of the administration and police to the cloud. Um, Munis would have to go to its own cloud, the Tyler cloud. And um, that has a significantly higher cost than everything else. Um, or we can re, keep Munis here, like, we have it set up now on a physical server. But we still would need to replace the server, so it would essentially be the cost of replacing the server. And also the cost of converting to the cloud, so um, those are all outlined there. Um, I think it's important to note that the server cloud conversion for Munis. Includes with it a reoccurring cost of about forty one thousand dollars a year.
A year.
A year, so.
Are other municipalities or neighboring municipalities all virtual, like, is it all in the cloud now?
Uh, a lot of them are, yeah, like, just their, um, I don't know what kind of financial software. I don't know how common Munis is in other municipalities. We do have um, our current IT consultant. He was working with the conversion, um, I think it's East, East Whitlin or East Pike Lynn or somewhere like that in Chester County. And they are going, they're going to the, to the cloud with Munis.
The idea that somebody could actually take your server, steal your server, like, or disaster could strike and damage your server.
Yeah, so if we were going to stay with a um, physical server. Then we would want to go forward with that disaster recovery backup. Um, it's called a Daddio is what it's called. And that's basically securing the data, but also giving you the ability to spin up your environment um, immediately. So that, if you were gonna stay with a physical server, you would one hundred percent need to have that disaster recovery in place. Given the, the climate now, so um, that cost then would be added to um. To the server cost as well, so.
I guess my only concern or question is understanding the world of hacking and security. Is there any benefit for us keeping a physical server here in any capacity?
No, I mean, you have plenty, I mean, your cloud would be a Microsoft cloud.
Attackable either one?
And I don't think one is necessarily, it's, it's really what security you have on it.
Yeah.
I do think you get a certain level of additional security when you're in like a Microsoft cloud. Cuz they have a bunch of different levels, um, but like Mike said, I mean, they're.
Anything can be.
Anything can happen and then, you know, you have the whole component, you know, they, they do build in like data loss prevention and things like that, so it's. I, I mean, I think it's definitely the way it's going, um, and we've actually gotten more life out of the existing server. Um, than we originally, we usually plan for like a five year replacement and this is going on like year seven or eight.
Um, if I can just add also, with regards to Munis. At some point, they're going to stop. Upgrading and supporting the server based, so even if we decide to go that way. In two years, they could say we are no longer going to, um, we'll, we'll, we'll support it in the sense that you get no upgrades. Yeah. So it'll be there and it'll be running, but you won't be up on the newest software. You won't be getting any customizations or anything like that. Because they want everyone to go to their cloud and it, it's supposed to be like a, a better. And they have a lot of cybersecurity and whatnot in it, just to look at all the different areas, but just try to keep that in mind. That we might not be on the most up to date software any longer if we keep it in-house.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any issue, but I don't, any comments from the rest of the board?
I think it makes sense to move to the cloud. I just, that's, sounds like it's the way things going. I think we should have the most up to date. Systems. Um, even though it's an added cost, if it like adds efficiency. And security, I think that that's worth it.
Yeah. Anyone else? Any other comments? Okay. Cloud it is.
Um, and then the next um, agenda item can kind of come off. We talked about it with this, which was the um, discussion about the electric pickup truck and the grant. I think we kind of covered that.
Yeah. Um, so I guess we are.
Pretty comprehensive.
Thanks, Jim.
Do I need to table that, uh, Neil? I guess I do, so.
Yeah.
Motion to to table the discussion around the electric pickup truck and grant application. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next up is the authorization to advertise a bid for construction of Phase Two of the pedestrian, pedestrian improvement project. I think we have a memo and the board packet um, from staff outlining, um, we rewarded two grants from the MOCA twenty-forty program in twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-two to fund a pedestrian improvement project along Bethune Pike, and this includes the installation of sidewalks and two pedestrian bridges, east and west side of Bethune Pike. Um, they're designed and fabricated by a vendor that we use through Co-Stars. The abutments, bridge placement, and sidewalks will be installed by a separate contractor selected through the public bidding process. Um, so they are requesting authorization for us to go out to bid for the Bethune Pike uh, pedestrian improvement project. I'd like to make a motion to authorize the advertisement of that bid. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, guys. Next up is approval of the invoices. Has everyone had a chance to review the invoices that were included in our board packet?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are any questions?
No.
Or? Um, like to make a motion to approve um, our invoices. Um, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is approval of the minutes from September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Has a, everyone had an opportunity? Wait a minute, it should be twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Yeah, it should be uh, Tuesday, September twenty-sixth. Has everyone had a chance to review those minutes?
Yes.
Are there any questions from the board? Comments or additions?
No.
Any from the public? Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the September twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three um, meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, we have included in the board packet supervisor liaison minutes um, from our volunteer commissions. Are there any questions about the inclusion of those meeting minutes?
No.
Seeing none, staff updates?
No, haven't any.
Nobody? Okay. Um, supervisor comments, Tessie?
Um, I, I would just uh, like to thank the staff, and I think Michelle was particularly pivotal in arranging the volunteer dinner the other night. It was lovely. I had a great time. And uh, thanks for doing that. That's all.
I'll second that, and nothing further. Janine?
Um, nope.
All good. Mike?
Um, I just wanna thank the board for its support of the flying Israeli flag and supportive of comments and putting them on the website about the processes that are going on over there right now, so appreciate everybody's.
Uh, I'd also like to echo the thanks and support to our staff for putting on our volunteer banquet. Especially thank you to Michelle for putting on a wonderful event, echoing what Mike said. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.